Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, Rhonda McCrino will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. If this is the opportunity for those who wish to address the school board to do so, I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired, and at that time I will ask that you please conclude your comments. Please also keep them respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. I ask that you also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda. But at times, we certainly will try to help with information before or after the meeting, but we do need to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. So with that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and start by stating your name and home address. Right there. You're up. And there is a little button that says "push", and you'll get a green light right there in front of you on the microphone, so we can all hear you well.
Good evening. My name's Steve Ray. I live at 5030 Hammond Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa, and I'm here to address an issue, busing concerns for my son James, who's a student at West High. Currently, at the moment, we live 2.7 miles from West High School, and we pay for busing. My son has to walk approximately half a mile to get the bus, which is provided for students to get it, ride it for free. We pay for the busing, as I said. I'm not trying to avoid payment for the busing. I'm trying to get a stop changed so that he doesn't have to walk on roads that are totally unsafe. I have printouts of the roads here. There are no sidewalks, and there are ditches, and there is no shoulder on the roads. The road that he'll have to walk down is Charles Avenue, Charles, I mean. And once he has to walk down there, he'll have to go on to, from Hammond, where we live, onto Charles. And there are no sidewalks on Hammond and nothing but ditches. As I said, I'm not trying to avoid paying for the fee. I'm just trying to get the bus stop relocated. The morning bus and the evening bus drive straight past the intersection, which is probably about 250 feet from our place. And I just don't know why we have to go through this process to get the busing changed.
I think it went off.
I've spoken in the past with Dr. Linderman several times on the phone over this, and I've got no result, and that's why I feel if I presented to you with some actual photos of the area and what it would be up to to get to his stop, I might get a better hearing. And I have those photos. I have Google Earth printouts plus a thread of emails that's been going back and forth from my wife to the school board and different people on the school facilities, even down to state level. But as I say, all I'm trying to do is get another stop put in. Currently, there's six kids on the bus in the morning and six on the afternoon. We pay for our busing. He has to walk to a stop where the children get picked up for free because they passed the three-mile limit. They don't pay for their busing, so we're getting hit twice because we're paying for it in our local taxes as well, and I just don't think it's entirely fair. And I'm looking at it from a safety point of view, from him walking down there, with roads covered with ice and snow, which will happen in the near future. And I'd like to leave this information here with you, these printouts and the email thread, if I could.
You certainly may. Absolutely. We'll be happy to take it. Yeah, Michael.
We'll get it from you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Appreciate the information. We'll be sure to take a look at it. You're welcome. Is there anyone further that wishes to address the board this evening? Great. Charlotte, you're sure you're not? Okay, great. Then, moving on, we will, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And this evening, it consists of three items. Item A, which is the minutes of the November 14, 2016, regular board meeting, and the November 21, 2016, special board meeting. Item B, which is personnel appointments and adjustments. And item C, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Items B and C, Bravo and Charlie, please.
B and C. Great. Then with that, I would entertain a motion to put item A on the agenda, on the table. And a second? Great. In discussion. Then, all those in favor of approving item A of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That will then take us to item B on page six, personnel appointments and adjustments.
I move the Board of Education to approve the personnel items as listed.
And a second? In discussion.
Yeah, I noticed there were two regular classroom teachers. That leaves of absence were approved at the end of, well, Thanksgiving break. It's kind of an awkward time. It's not the end of the semester or anything. How do we, how do we go about, you know, I'm sure we don't have reserved teachers, particularly a specific subject matter. How do we address those?
We use long-term subs, and typically, if they're going to be gone, sometimes the leaves of absence are very short-term. But if they're going to be gone for a considerable amount of time, two or three weeks or more, the building principals interview candidates, the among, out of our subpool, and we'll select long-term subs for those positions.
What's long-term?
What would a long, over 10 days?
10 days? Are these particular ones? Are they like the end of the year, or are they just 10 days?
Oh, you mean what the vacancy is?
Yeah.
It just kind of depends. Many times, if it's a health and family responsibility, it's, they have exhausted their other leaves available to them, and they're dealing with a medical issue which might require short-term or long-term. We don't know. They have a right to up to two years.
Bev, is that also maternity leave? Does maternity leave?
Well, we don't have maternity leave, but usually eight to 12 weeks for having a baby.
It's not called.
It's not called.
It's not just maternity leave.
It comes under disability, doesn't it?
No. No, it might be under a personal illness.
Personal illness, okay.
And Dr. Smith, just to clarify also, because we've had a couple conversations about contracts and other things. When someone takes a leave of absence, you said they have up to two years, but they're not, they're not vacating their contract. They're not vacating their contract obligations. They are...
No, they have a right by their contract to be granted two years of leave.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything further than on item B? Then, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Let, takes us then to item C, which is on page nine.
I move the Board of Education to approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
And a sec. Thanks, Mike. And discussion.
Yeah, my question is, or my comment is relative to the Durham payment on item 11. I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be wise to ask Durham for some official correspondence regarding how they hire and how they determine when to relieve bus drivers due to the tragic accident. That was a Durham accident. She might have noticed, and number news identified Waterloo as one of those services, so. So I think it would be appropriate. You know, we pay them a lot of money, $448,000 for this month, that to just make sure we understand what their process is. And, and then, you know, if it's satisfactory to us, which I assume it will be, but still, if anything were to happen, we would have that document to say, this clarifies our understanding with Durham as to, you know, what their responsibilities, what they're committing to.
So for dismissing drivers, is that what you're...
Well, hiring and dismissing, yeah, the whole, the whole.
Their policy.
How do they, you know, what's the process for them to ensure drivers are going to be safe drivers?
Yeah, and it might also be helpful to know, they have a very extensive training program. And so I could include the hiring process, the training process, and should it be needed, dismissal process, yeah.
Is any of that regulated different from state to state?
Some of it is.
Yeah, there possibly could be. I know that, I mean, Iowa Department of Transportation certainly may have some laws that would be different from other states, but I think Durham policies are corporate, so, but that's a really good question.
And I'm sure Durham has probably released a statement. I saw they were quoted a couple different places as, you know, when I was reading through those news outlets, so. I would bet they've got, they could get us this policy pretty quickly.
And their CEO released a statement too, a very, you know, heartfelt statement, but very sad, very sad.
Great idea, Lyle. Is there anything further than on item D? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit D, which is board policy changes. And the recommended motion for this is that the board approve the following policy: no-cost passes to district-sponsored activities and events.
So move.
And a second? Great. In discussion. I know this is the second reading of this, and Tara Thomas is here with us this evening, our Director of School and Community Relations. Tara, just to refresh our viewers' memories, this was in place, I believe, to just clarify how these passes are used. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Pretty straightforward changes. Does anyone have any questions for Tara?
We should put in here that the picture has to be the original picture, so.
You can't use your high school photo? You're making me laugh. I don't even think they have pictures on them, do they?
Yeah.
They do? The long-term ones? I didn't think they did.
I think so.
Thought they were just yellow, but I guess I have to...
Taking tickets at the games, I can't recall. Oh, because the pass holders go to different places, then, so I haven't seen them.
I'm thinking my folks don't have their photos, but maybe they do, so.
Yeah, some of them don't. You're right. Some of those senior passes don't.
All right. Anything further? Then, all those in favor of approval of the board policy change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit E. Thank you, Tara. I appreciate it. Which is financial information for, for information only, and I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Michael Coughlin. We're going to go through some finances tonight, which is always a good thing. I'm gearing this up.
That's kind of a buildup. But this is really the, the regular financial report through the month of October. We've been talking a lot about the end of the previous fiscal year with reports that we have been completing for the summer and for the audit and so forth. And July and August are not heavy months of activity for spending or for revenue. So really, September and October are the first months that we get back into the normal expenditure trends because we start paying teacher salaries again, being one of our main sources of expenditures. So just point out the different areas that are included in the report. Pages 19 through 22 is by fund. The cash balances that are in each of the accounts, what came in for receipts and out as expenses. And then there's a few memorandum entries about receivables and payables at the end of the previous year. But you can follow the cash balance of each fund and what is happening from month to month. The graph at the end also summarizes that as we get to that report at the end of the section. So then, going to page 23. 23 through 26 is a detail by source code, which is really a fancy way of saying where the money's coming from, whether it's property tax, which is the majority of the local funds that come in, and then there's state money, state aid and other grants, and then federal money that comes in. Two of the highest amounts in that are Medicaid reimbursements and the title money. So by each fund, it shows the money, the revenue that's coming in, in each one. And if you're looking during, in the general fund, I do have the budgets in for '16, '17 as compared to the actual in '15, '16. But when you look at page 25 and 26, I don't have those in for the other funds as of yet. But they will be in for next time, and there are really not a lot of change from year to year in those other funds besides the general fund. So these are the revenues. First, we had the cash balances, and now we have the revenues. And then, moving on to the expenditures on page 27 through 30. Those are broken down by the type of expenditure that they are being used on. The first page on 27 is salaries, and you can see all the different categories of salaries that we have. And again, you'll see the majority of those payments starting in September and October. And then in page 28 and so on, you get into the benefits, the purchase services, overhead, supplies, equipment, and the AEA share through the month of October as compared to the budget that is put in for '16, '17 as compared to the actual from last year. And on page 30, it just gives you an idea of where we're sitting on the line item budget. About in the middle of the page, it says "fund 10 totals." So the budget, line item budget for '16, '17 is $128 million, almost $600,000 as compared to $125 million, $900,000. So it has gone up, but again, that is a budget figure compared to an actual from the year before. And there's always a little put into that budget for the unexpected. So that was the maximum that we would be spending out of that fund. So when you're doing a comparison from one year to the next, you are looking at an actual compared to an estimation, the budget for the new year. And then there's a recap on the bottom of page 31 of those categories just in total, so you can go across and see what we're spending in salary benefits and so on, just as a group as compared to the previous year. I will say that the expenditures to this point are as we've expected. And we are currently refining those things even as we change staff and add a position and replace things here and there. One of the changes that came in the November payroll was anybody that had earned a lane change didn't get paid for that until then. So really, when I do a 12-month comparison, December is really the first clean month that I can use to say, here's the amount, and can I multiply it times 12 to see if it's going to come close to the budget? So that will be coming up in just a couple of weeks to be able to refine that as well. On page 31 and 32 are the other funds, the expenditures by their categories. And again, I don't have the budgets in there yet either, but they will run very close to the previous year, and they will be in for the next time. And then on page 33 is just a picture that's worth 1,000 words compared to the budget or the cash balances on the first report that we looked at. And that gives you an idea by the graphs of where we stand with cash in the bank compared to the last two years. And then you can also see the actual numbers on the right-hand side comparing where we've been at this time in the last two years. And these are our four major funds: the general fund, management fund, the sales tax revenue fund, and the PEPAL fund. So really, the only one that's noticeably different is PEPAL, and that would be because of the CTE project that was heavily using those funds early in the year. And that will recover a little bit as we go through the year. And if you can see the trend line there, that we usually bump up at the end of the year and we get the second half of the tax money coming in. So things are operating as we're expecting, and we will continue to drill down into the detail as we go month by month.
The management fund last year bumped up. Was there, what was the cause of that?
We ended early retirement plan. And insurance came in lower than what we expected, our property liability. So it was kind of two things. And when we approve the management budget each year, we don't know what our property liability rates are going to be, so we have to leave a little leeway in there for that. So that will be something that we look at when we pass next year's budget to say if we've got the trend of what these costs are, we might be able to trim that back a little bit.
On page 30, the big ticket item there, the salaries. We're projecting 1.2 million more than, well, the budget's more than actual last year. Do you adjust the budget based on, if the 14-year-to-date was for some reason out of line, do you go back and adjust the budget now, or is that budget fixed for the year?
I start out with a budget based on the projecting the staff we have going forward and some of the cuts that we have made. But honestly, there's a lot of staff that are replaced. People leave and new people come in, and they have a different level. They may be getting paid more or less than what the previous year's staff was there. And it's not just the teachers. It's all the different positions that come into that. Only going up 1.2 million is not much of a change from one year to the next. When, if you look at, if everybody stayed on staff and graduated into the next year, we'd be looking more of a $3 to $3.2 million increase. So there was some cutbacks with some positions, so, and in all areas, not just teachers. There was paras and others as well. So right now, that is our projection based on the staff that we currently have. But I will look at that as December comes through and be able to project that out to an annual basis and see if we're still staying within that range. But I expect it to change a little bit.
So then, do you change the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, the 74.8 is aligned with the 14.4.
Correct.
Okay. On page 20, the 6.6 million in bond principal, interest, and fees. Is that one of how many bonds? How many bonds do we have that we're paying on?
We are paying on three.
Okay. So that 6.6 million is for one of the three bonds?
It was for, I believe, two of the three. Because one of them was that $5 million that we did, that we were paying back over two years, and that was a payment in July. So that was about $2.5 million, then about $4 million on the, on the major bond.
Okay. And is the, is the other one then, is that a smaller or larger amount?
When I said three, I didn't include that little $5 million one, so there's actually three plus that one. The other two that we have, one was a $10 million bond that we had, and the other one was a QSCB bond that we make payments basically to our own sinking fund. But it does show up in that number that we're actually making the payment. So it's kind of like three and a half bonds. We'll be done with the, we'll be done with the $5 million bond in July of this next year.
Okay. And then, I think in November, isn't this about the time, you know, TrueUp or the final on the 1% sales money?
It is. We have not received that yet, but it should be coming shortly.
Okay.
It's usually between $400,000 and $500,000. That's what the trend has been.
Yeah, but, okay. So my questions.
Michael, I want to piggyback on what Lyle asked you about when we have to change or amend the budget. That doesn't require us to do, if it's within a certain amount...
No, what we're talking about here is just the line item budget. The published budget that the board has approved is a much... The published budget that the board has approved is a much higher number than this.
Yes. Okay.
We keep it within a range of, a comfortable range that we wouldn't want to go over that. But within that, we do changes within just the line item budget as long as we're staying within that published amount.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted to clarify that this is the line item that we're talking about, but not that, not our budget that we publish and that we are held to by.
So the total of the line item budget is less than?
Yes.
In the past, I know we have actually gone below or in debt and had to take a loan out to finish part of the year.
For cash flow.
Cash flow. And we have not needed to do that the last few years? Is that correct?
We have not. And even the last two years that we did do that through a local bank, we did it just because we were supporting the sales tax revenue fund with our own money rather than taking out a borrow earlier. But now that that is being restored by that 5 million dollar bond, the general fund is staying above zero all year long, so we don't have to borrow money for that.
Okay. That's a good thing, right?
Yes, it is.
Let me take that. Is there anything, anybody have more questions for Mr. Koffler? All right.
Appreciate, appreciate all your information.
I just, just adding to what Mr. Kinsey was asking, if you look back on page 33 where the graphs are, you'll see that even with staying in a positive manner, there's a couple of times during the early part of the year that we get pretty close to what we need. But the rest, and that's just basically the difference between a 15th payroll and state aid coming in on the 18th and boosts that up. So we're only even close a couple of times of the year. That's just basically a timing issue.
Thanks, I'll echo that, what Lyle said, Michael. Thank you very much for providing this information for us. And it's always good to keep it all, keep it all relevant in front. So that concludes, well, actually, we're done with our action items. And so we can move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman.
Absolutely. I knew that it was a little bit of a lighter agenda, so I actually have several things, and I'll try to move through them quickly. But so this week, I happened to be looking at my calendar, and I noticed that Waterloo Schools employees have the opportunity this week to have their, or actually, I think it's next week, their blood profiles done as far as insurance. And I thought it might be a good time to just mention something generally, that we have a wellness department that runs through the human resources department, and this is just more for information and it's just relevant. But I think that it's very, it's very important for the public to know and all of us to know too, that we are a district that doesn't just take our health for granted. We do some things to really try to be proactive as far as helping our staff stay, have opportunities to do a variety of things. And so I was just kind of looking at some of the things that our wellness department has done. And really want to, you know, for example, I even saw one time they were putting out some, some healthy recipes, doing some things like they do some, some physical activity things. You can come and learn different, you know, yoga and a variety of things like that. Travel tips. I remember one time they had travel tips where you could come and just learn a variety of different things about traveling cheaply. And so we had one of our resident travel experts come in and talk about that. We've done things on money management, we've done things on stress, stress relief, and just most recently, the blood profiles, which I always sign up for every year because I think, you know, it's, it's $25 of our money, but it's just a really great opportunity to do it right here in this building. So, or in the building that, that our staff works. So I just thought that was just kind of a nice thing to mention, it's just timely. And especially with the holidays coming, I guess we probably all ate too much, I would assume. Maybe not Dr. McNulty, but the rest of us. Dude, he's a much better eater than the rest of us. So, you know, I just think that that's really, it was just a timely thing to mention, I thought. As far as the gentleman who was here to talk about the bus, I, I know that we refrain from talking about specifics of things, but I do think that it's an important concept to actually mention. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the way that the policy reads right now. So for bus riders who are not eligible for transportation, the way that our policy reads right now is that they can pay for transportation, and it is their obligation to just get to the closest bus stop. And so we have followed that very closely. We, we try not to make exceptions because I will say, once you do it for all, if you have a policy, it means, it means that the policy probably should be followed. If you're not going to follow it, then you probably shouldn't have a policy. And Tara wouldn't have anything to do when she thinks about the policies coming up. So that's the policy. And I know he mentioned, I think he said walks about a half of a mile. In this case, that, that isn't quite right. But so we do have people going there. If we, if we want to start picking up door-to-door paid, paid ridership, then we're going to need to have that conversation about whether that, that policy needs to be changed. So right now, we are following the policy, and, and people do get to the closest site. I know my children are bus riders, and they also walk a little ways to get to their bus. So it's not necessarily atypical for a person to have to walk to the bus site. But anyway, that was, I just wanted to mention that so that we kind of were clear on what that is. They do get to the nearest bus site, and then they can go from there.
But I think we might want to look at the policy. If the bus route goes closer to put a stop on an existing route.
Yep, and we can change the policy to do that.
Is seemingly a...
We have had, we have had times in the past where somebody has said, you go around the, the block this way when you could go around this way and pick me up, and you know, that kind of thing. And so we would want to be careful about that, but that doesn't mean we can't change policy and look at, you know, how to be as accommodating as possible. But every time we do that, then we'd have to look at bus routes and how minutes change and when people get on. So it's, it is not undoable.
And how many kids that affects.
Right, and how many kids that, that impacts. And so I would say that we're probably looking at a policy change versus just making an isolated decision on one student. Because there are other times when we have followed the policy. And so if we, if we do deviate for, for, you know, one particular family, whether it's this gentleman tonight or somebody else, we probably do need to be prepared to do that for everyone who is, who has been impacted by that. Because it's, you know, consistency is, is something that's important to people.
And because it's a rural route, we don't have a lot of those, but the stops are much further apart.
They are. And I think in this case, it's, it's actually 0.23 miles or something like that on a, on a, so it is, you know, but, you know, we have, yeah. So we'll, we'll talk about that. But I, again, I would urge that we would look at a policy versus that. So...
Was he, was he correct that there's only six kids on the bus?
I don't, I wouldn't know about that, but I, I mean, maybe there's six kids when he gets on, but I'm not sure about.
That might be something to follow up on.
Yeah, I noticed that, yep, yep. And, and I did talk with him multiple times too, and he was very kind and very, very cordial, and we were able to, you know, talk about a variety of, of options for him. And I did actually suggest that if he wanted, I, I actually was the one who suggested that he come here because he said, what do I do if I don't like your decision? And I said, you come to the school board meeting, or you talk with them, or whatever. And so I actually recommended that he come here. So we're never, I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for. So I think that was the right thing for him to do. Two more things. I wanted to mention career and technical education. We have several things going on with our Waterloo Career Center, and so I'm just going to mention them very briefly. First of all, we know that at the ribbon cutting, we, we announced our next three programs. And so we are, we are right now working to make sure that we get our plan in place and trying to get a cost for what that would, would, you know, what the cost would be for these renovations, for advanced manufacturing, for information technology, and for early childhood education. And so we are working on that right now. And the beauty of it, I've said multiple times, the beauty of it is it's not May. Because last year, we made that decision in May, and we had just a few months to make that happen. So, you know, it's, it's November still, not for longer, but we are working on that. A couple of things too. We are, first, we've been tracking enrollment for these programs, and I'm really excited to report to the public. I know the board, I had put it in their update. But when we looked at the spring enrollment, it is already significantly higher than the fall enrollment. So nursing program has actually maxed out right now for our current blocks. We have a morning block and an afternoon block, and we are maxed out, we are full, and we have a waiting list for that. I think that's really exciting. And so now, I will, in spirit of transparency, I will tell you the waiting list is only four students. It's not very long, but it is a waiting list. And so we've talked with those four students, and we will give them first dibs on the fall enrollment, so they will get into their juniors, so they'll certainly have time to take that program. However, you know, when we start having waiting lists, then what we will do is we'll look at, look at adding capacity. Do we add a middle of the day block, a morning block, a middle, you know, you instantly add capacity by doing that. Some schools, I've said this multiple times, other districts in, outside of Iowa, have even done, you know, four blocks where they have an early morning, a mid, you know, mid-afternoon, and then they'll even do like a four to six block. So we have opportunities to add capacity there, and even the, the digital graphics, it's not full yet. But I just got word yesterday that there were, I believe there were 10 more students who wanted to join. So we're getting, we're getting some kids in that. Then, the counterbalance of that is working on enrollment for the fall. So we are doing some really cool things to make sure that people are very, very aware of the programming and that they start thinking about whether the CTE would be right for them. So one of those things is that we are giving tours to all ninth grade kids in our district. We're doing it in small groups, and I'm actually leading some of them, which I asked to do because I thought it'd be really great to work, you know, face-to-face with some of our ninth graders. So they will be traveling in small groups. Actually, I believe they started today. I'm doing the tour tomorrow morning at 7:45, so it'll be fun to, to meet the students and show them around and tell them, you know, tell them about it, let them visualize, let them talk to some of the students who are already there. So we believe that that will bolster our enrollment because it's a good thing. You, you were a guidance counselor, so you know that that's how you, that's how you get people to be there. So that's exciting. And then Tara and her department are working on a really great promotional video that we will, that'll probably go district-wide and who knows, maybe broader than our district? We don't know. But the promotional video will be telling a little bit more about the programs, but it actually is going to focus on people recommending a particular student. Like, I'm going to tag so-and-so because I think they would be really interested in this particular program. So the, at the hashtag will be #ExploreYourFuture. And so they will, will be asking you to, to forward that, that post through social media, through Facebook, through Twitter, through printing it out and handing it to somebody, whatever you want to do to get that message out. But we're really excited about that going, and the, really the focus of that video will be to bolster enrollment for the fall, because we actually have done pretty well for the spring. So growing every single semester, that's, that's very, very exciting. So, and so that's all I wanted to mention on CTE. And then my final thing is, I have been wanting for quite some time to really do some updates on the, the strategic plan. And so if people, I don't know if the camera can shoot up here, but we've added a new sign, we've updated it with our strategic plan that has P-A-C-E. Good job, Pam. And, and that is really the areas, it's people, achievement, community, and environment. And so what I'm going to pass out to the board today is just kind of a quick reference guide, I guess I would call it. I think I can go that way. I think there's plenty. I'll just pause a moment until you get that. And I kind of want to just update you a little bit about how we're going to tackle this. So I think it would be really great if we would take one area a month for a while. And once we finish the P-A-C-E, we might start over and look at those. So in January, one of the meetings, and I haven't quite decided yet whether it'll be the first meeting or the second meeting, and it may depend on the agenda items and which one maybe is shorter because it'll take a little bit longer. But we will be highlighting the P area, the people area. And you can see there are four goal areas underneath there, attracting and retaining high-quality staff, diverse staff, aligning our staff with talent and workforce needs, kind of getting the right people in the right seats. And then professional learning opportunities. And then that last one is really improving the organizational health. And we have done, in each of those goal areas, we have really strategic actions that we are taking, and we're measuring to see the progress on those. So starting in January at one of the meetings, I would be, we will be bringing some people before you, before, kind of toward the beginning of the meeting through a report, and talking about, maybe highlighting a couple of the areas where we are working, and then having some people here. Bev is really probably on, on the P for people, being the, being in human resources. She really has the lead on many of the things under P. But she'll be bringing some people with her. Maybe, you know, one of them is that we talk about onboarding under that very first one. The second bullet under attracting and retaining staff, one of the things that we've worked really hard on is developing a comprehensive onboarding process, and that's really when people are hired, letting them know, how do we do business in Waterloo Schools? So one of the things that Bev and I have talked about is maybe bringing, we've had a couple new principals who have been hired to our district from outside. And so we've worked really hard to help them understand what it's like and how to do your job. And so we ask them along the way, and one of them is Rachel Savage at Bunker, and we've asked her along the way to give us feedback. How, what did you not know? What did we forget to tell you? And so we've been using that to amp, ramp up or amp up our, our process. And so Bev will be kind of taking, she may not be doing all the talking, I suspect not, but maybe talking a little bit about some of the things that we're doing, highlighting a couple things, bringing in a few people to say, here's how it feels, you know, here's what the plan was, and here's how it feels as the plan is being enacted. And then in February, Charles is going to go through some of the things that we're doing in the area of student achievement. And then in March, we're going to tackle C with some of the things we're doing for community. And then in April, we're going to work on E. And then we'll see how that goes. We may start right over with P again, and who knows? But I think it would be really helpful for people to know the work that we do. It's not just kind of willy-nilly where we come and say, okay, what's the job of the day? We don't do that. We have a plan, we're working the plan, it's a five-year plan. And so I just wanted you to have this cheat sheet, kind of a quick, quick reference guide, and gear up for January. We'll be sharing a little bit more with the public, and it'll be fun for them to be able to watch it on TV. So, thank you. Oh, and one more thing on that. I will be asking the board prior to the presentation to give me feedback on what questions are rolling through your mind. So for January, sometime in December, I will be saying to you, give me some questions, look at what we're doing, and write some actual questions. And we're going to make sure that we answer those and more during our presentation. It just kind of will give Bev and others some good guidance. And so we'll do the same thing for Charles and his group in February. It'll get a few new faces, and it'll fill our crowd a little bit more, so, besides Tara and Charlotte, so.
So where, where we have the performance metrics, will they be part of this?
Yeah, we, we have attached the performance metrics to each of these. And so as we're highlighting, we, we're just not going to have time at a board meeting to dig into every single thing we're doing under P. But Bev will be just picking a couple highlights, and then she'll also be referencing some of the highlights of the metrics that we are using to track how we're doing along the way. And maybe give some statistics, like, you know, we used to have this many, and this is where we are now. So I think it'd be really good for the board, but also it'd be really good for the public. So if they choose to watch it on TV, which I'm sure many do, right? Optimistic, choosing positive. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Lindeman. And I just want to echo that one of the reasons that I think having a strategic plan is so important is that it isn't just a document that sits on a shelf and that you pull it out when you, I mean, it should be a working document. And so when Dr. Lindeman and I meet, because we do that at least once a month, we talk about different ways to keep our board informed, our public informed. And I think that this strategic plan really keeps us focused and gives the board a direction as well as the superintendent a direction from the board. And so it's all really important stuff. And so I certainly look forward to the updates, but I also think it is really important that we do some of that work here at the board table. So I'm looking forward to that. And I'm sure we'll all get our little pencils out and get our questions ready for you. So Bev, I guess you're first, so. All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda then is information from board members, and I'm going to start down here to my left with Jesse.
Okay, I guess the only thing I had tonight was just, I just recognized Carlton Todd and Devin Moore for being first-team All-State for football. Quite the honor, and good job, those kids, and rest of the kids on the team, so.
Thank you. That's a great honor for both those young men.
Angie, excuse me.
I have, I have a sports-related one as well. I, I got to attend the jamboree, the women, the girls' jamboree at East, and it was really refreshing as an East High basketball cheerleader from the 90s, watching my sister never win a game, to watch them win and play, I was wrestling cheerleader in college, watch them win and play and compete at a level that was amazing. So Waterloo East High girls are, if you have, have a chance to go to a game, the next game is coming up on December 9th. It's against East versus West, and West is also looking really good from what I hear. I got to the tail end of that one. So that was, it's going to be just an amazing game, and I'm looking so forward to it, hoping that that can fit in my calendar.
Awesome. Thank you. Rhonda?
I just wanted to add, in terms of our strategic plan, the community has an opportunity to give input. Coming to board meetings is important. You know, we listen to what your concerns are, what your recommendations are, and we do take those things into account. So as a community and as parents, you do have an opportunity to have a say in our strategic plan. Also, I wanted to say... Also, I wanted to say, a lot of times, parents and the community don't think they have enough to donate or they can't afford to help schools. But something as simple as collecting a pop tap off of a can, for example, at Pointer Elementary, they collect those things for the Ronald McDonald House. And what the Ronald McDonald House is, is for our young people who are, are ailing and their parents need somewhere to stay. You know, they take those pop taps and they collect money from them. So something as, so, so small seemingly can make such a big difference. So really take an opportunity to look at your kid's school, look at what fundraising opportunities they have, because you would be pleasantly surprised at how much you can help. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Rhonda. Mike?
I just wanted to comment that most of us enjoyed attending the Iowa School Board Convention a couple of weeks ago, and I think all who attended got a lot out of it and look forward to debriefing maybe a little and get, getting some information from each other as to what we got. It might be a good idea to have a work session just to discuss some of those issues.
You have to share what you shared with me about what you heard there and how it compares to Waterloo.
Well, I found myself in some of the discussions that I would, heard the speakers and, and just people in, in small discussions, making comments about what they were doing and what was working. And I found myself saying, yeah, we do that. And, oh yeah, I've heard of that one. And it was refreshing and made me feel good that we're doing, we know, we can tell that we're doing the right things and we just have to let time and, and the efforts give them a chance and hopefully they will succeed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I don't have anything other than thanks for the early Christmas present.
I know. I'm looking out. I said, he, you missed the last meeting when we had this, we were all doodling around on it during the meeting, so. I think you can thank Marty Metcalf, I think. Is it his creation or?
It's my creation, although it's his copy.
There we go. Excellent.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you to you both on that. Which, okay, so we're, we're sharing the love on that. Exactly. Exactly. And I have no report. I was going to say something about the, about the conference and Mike, you said it very well, so no need to repeat myself on that. I do just want to remind our public that we only have one regularly scheduled board meeting in December and it will be on the 12th of December. We do have a few other meetings scheduled in there, but this is our regular one. And then we'll be back here again in January for our regular two meetings, second and fourth. Is there anything further that the board would wish us to address tonight?
For me, for parents, I just want to encourage you to really connect with your building principals or your son or daughter's principal to see what ways you can get involved. We know that parental involvement is, is a major indicator of student success. And a lot of, a lot of us, especially those of us who are single parents, I know that's difficult, but there are a lot of ways that, that you can contribute. So please just ask to see what you can do because we really need just involvement from everyone. It does take a village. So just ask and see what's needed and what you can do. And if your boss won't let you off to work, let, let us know. Let me know.
They can come to a meeting and we can talk about it, so. Great.